All please stand. Almighty God, we the representatives of the citizens of the city of Brisbane are assembled here to strive and care for the welfare of our city and all its people. Lord, we ask that you guide us in the decisions we make today. Amen. We acknowledge the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet and pay our respects to elders past and present. Please be seated. I declare the meeting open and I remind all councillors of your obligations to declare material, personal interests and conflict of interest where relevant, and an requirement of such to remove yourself from the council chamber for debate and voting where applicable.
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Point of order to you, councillor Shree.
I just have a request for you to add an item to the agenda. I know you can do that under the meeting's local law. I'd like to request-
I'm sorry, but I actually can't hear anything to say.
Sorry, I can dispute. I'd just like to request that, under the meeting's local law, you amend the agenda to include an item calling for a moment's silence for the people who've lost their homes and lives as a result of the recent bushfires?
That would have to be taken by a resolution, but-
I think you just have discretion as a speaker to-
Look, I won't do it today. I won't do it today, but can I please have a moment to reflect on it and see how that would be the best way to approach that? Thank you. All right. Councillors, are there any apologies? There being none. Councillors, confirmation of minutes, please.
Mr Chair, I move that the minutes of the 4,607th meeting, held on Tuesday the 5th of November 2019, be received, taken as read and confirmed.
It's been moved by councillor Richards, seconded by councillor Marks, that the minutes of the 4,607th meeting of council, held on the 5th of November 2019, be received, taken as read and confirmed. Are all those in favour, say aye?
Aye!
And the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillors, I draw to your attention the public participant item on the agenda. We have two today, and the first one is Ms Angelique Etia, who will address the chamber on the Mummies Wish Inc. support services. Welcome, Ms Etia. You have five minutes. You can speak either standing or sitting, whichever is your preference, and your time begins when you begin. There's a clock on your left. Proceed when you're ready.
Good afternoon, councillors. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. It's a privilege to represent Mummies Wish, the Mummies Wishers community as CEO. Who are we? One of the purposes of today was to let you know that we exist. We're a small not-for-profit that make a very big impact. We were founded in 2007 by two Brisbane mums who met at hospital while having treatment for cancer. And they said, if we survive this, we are going to do something to support other mums, because they recognised some gaps in service and support that they weren't getting. Gail was 32 years old with a 12-week-old baby, and Bernadette was 14 weeks into her pregnancy with a two-year-old. Pleased to say that they both survived, and Mummies Wish was founded because of that, of these amazing women that were going through a difficult journey and were still thinking of how they could support others. Our mission is to provide immediate and practical support whilst mum is having treatment, and our vision is to support all mums that are diagnosed every year, which is 5,000. I was quite horrified by that figure myself. And at the moment, we can only support 1,000. So there are 80% of mums that we're unable to support. The type of support, I guess, we provide is not duplicated elsewhere, that's really important. It's personalised, so often we, the support coordinators, and Gail is one of them, who founded the organisation, is one of the first people they speak to when they find out. What do we do? How do we tell our children? You know, if you can imagine yourself, if it was your mum or your daughter or yourself. We get to know them, so we don't just send a pack and say, there you go, thank you. How many children do you have? How much support do you receive? What can we do to help you? And it may just be connecting to our Facebook, private Facebook page, or it may be financial support packs for the kids. And that leads me to the next support we provide, care packages. So we send books that help them explain to their children what's happening. Often, what the kids are thinking is 10 times worse than what the mum is worried about saying. I think what we're known for, for those of you that do know us, is we have a bear with a recordable heart. And what this allows mum to do is to record a message, so when she's not very well, or she's having treatment, the child can actually listen to mum's voice. Excuse me, I'm still not getting very good at saying this bit. It really is, has a great impact. And we had a phone call about a month ago. There was a mum who said her son, who is still 14, who's 14 now, she's in remission, still sleeps with that teddy bear and no-one can touch it. So when we think about practical things, that's the kind of things that we do. We have a community. We also provide support packages for things like cleaning. What happens when mum's not functioning? Things fall apart, pretty much. Cleaning, gardening, nutritious food, which is really important when they're sick. The other thing we do, I think the fourth, is we provide regular, ongoing support. We refer to over 600 partners, and that's tailored, again, depending on the needs of the family. And I think, for us, that's something we're really proud of. You know, no duplication, efficiency, effectiveness with the little dollars that we have. Today, I guess I'm asking two things of you all. I don't know how many of you have heard of Mummies Wish, but something I'm hearing a lot is, oh, I didn't know you existed. Or if you do, what can we do? Spread the word within your community. Follow us on our social media. We have a Christmas campaign coming up, so we would love if every council donated $500. And that will allow us to help a mum in your community. And that is something purposeful, and I can tell you, every dollar makes a difference. And we can report on that for you as well. We will have a page on our website stating what councils support us, so you'll get some strategic marketing if you like. The other thing we would love you to do is talk about us to your community. It's not just funds that we need, because we're not supported by state or federal government. We have 2.9 full-time equivalent staff, and we support nearly 800 mums a year, so if you can imagine our workloads. We work very hard to make sure the mums are not, you know, there's no gap in the support. There's always a champion in your community. I'm a great believer in communities. If somebody knows what to do and how to help, and they're a doer, they'll do it. So we would love to see a community Christmas fundraiser by the community that will also let some mums know we exist. Some mums, we've heard, they're in palliative care, and they haven't heard of us till then. And that's because we don't have a marketing budget. We are, and you are, our marketing budget. So I invite you to have a look at the handouts that I've provided, because contact me directly if you've got some suggestions and ideas. We don't want any mum to miss out. And I really appreciate you listening today and hoping that you can connect us with people who'd like to support us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms Etia. Now, councillors, most of you, or you should have on your table, a document like this that outlines a lot of what was said, but also ways you can contact. Ms Etia, can I please call on councillor Maddock to respond?
Thank you, Mr Chairman, and thank you, Ms Etia, for coming today and talking about this most important issue, but mostly thank you for the contribution that you and your group make on this horrendous disease that affects so many lives. I think you've spoken so poignantly on the impact, not only directly but indirectly, on the family, and as we all would say and agree, that our mums are the most important part of our families, and when mum's not feeling well, then no-one is, and especially with something like this. Your flyer is actually, the snapshot is actually a great example of the practically important things that people don't think about when they're affected by cancer, and the effect that it'll have on their lives, and the indirect impact on the family just in its day-to-day activities. So the service you provide is obviously so vitally important. Can I thank you very much also for everything that everyone gives so selflessly. Obviously, there's funding that's provided, but this doesn't obviously add in all of the indirect support that you provide, which is absolutely invaluable, to the organisation and its running. I know that councillor Allen in Northgate Ward has provided some assistance through the Lord Mayor's Fund towards a fundraising event, and I certainly encourage all councillors to make contact with you, but I'd also appreciate the opportunity to organise a meeting with yourselves and officers, to see what other opportunities might exist within council in the work we do, and how we might be able to support fundraising activities such as this, to provide greater assistance to you. Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you. That'd be wonderful.
Mr Pearce, walk after you. Councillors, I'd like, excuse me, I'd like to now call on Professor Victor Ferrars, who will address the chamber on the Dornoch Terrace Safety Improvement Project. Professor Ferrars, you have five minutes. You can speak standing or sitting, whichever is your preference. Your time commences when you begin. You have a timer on your left, and begin at your comfort.
Mr Chair, my Lord Mayor and councillors, I'm indebted to council for providing me with this opportunity to speak to you about the proposed Dornoch Terrace Safety Improvement Project. On the 8th of October, a letterbox dropped every residence in the street regarding this project. I advised that I would be objecting to it, for reasons which I briefly stated. Judging by the amount of emails and telephone calls that followed, and the flurry of activity up and down the street, the community interest, I have to say, was overwhelming, and particularly overwhelming in opposition to the project. As a Dornoch Terrace resident, I'm very concerned that the project seeks to remove more than 100 parking spaces on all curbsides, up and down the street, and everything marked no standing. Disruption to owner-occupiers, as well as the body corporate residents and tenants, will be extreme, all to give preferred treatment to essentially downhill recreational cyclists travelling at racing speed, who otherwise are not attached in any way to the area. Supposedly, this project is designed to make things easier and safer, and in fact, council's brochure is headlined, 'Getting You Home Quicker and Safer', yet the very project is not directed towards that ultimate gain. It is acknowledged that safety for all, including not only for cyclists, but also for vehicles and pedestrians, is a priority. However, Dornoch Terrace is a district road, carrying considerable traffic through a densely populated area. Dornoch Terrace is not a bike lane. Primary vehicular access for residents, their visitors, service vehicles, furniture removalists, construction plant and equipment, and the like, will somehow have to navigate their way through a very extensive no-standing environment. There is an absence of data supporting council's proposals, which does not allow for rigorous assessment, and in the absence of such information, the proposed, the project really lacks credibility and certainly robustness. There are other proposals which the project seeks, and to which I also raise objection, and I, just as an example, the removal of certain bus stops, a great inconvenience to bus patrons, including the many seniors who live in the area. Dornoch Terrace already exhibits glaringly insufficient onsite car parking provision, an unfortunate legacy of town plans in the past and practices. Wholesale removal of on-street car parking is now proposed, will create chaotic conditions, including social disruption and congested- and congestion in the immediate vicinity. The interests and the wellbeing of residents, including those with no access to onsite car parking and their visitors, should and must prevail, if nothing else, in the interests of social equity. As a specific example of ill-conceived planning, parishioners attending services at St Francis will not be able to do so conveniently by private vehicle, after more than 80 years of being in its location. Council literature under the heading 'Bus Stop Changes', the removal of bus stops, refers to considering consolidating bus stops in Dornoch Terrace to deliver safer cycling experience. Unless council can demonstrate categorically that the bus stop locations along Dornoch Terrace somehow contribute, and are indeed the very cause of accidents there, then it is submitted that the convenience of the resident bus patrons should and must prevail. They should not be disadvantaged by the removal of bus stops and the inconvenience they would otherwise have to suffer, particularly given the very sloping nature of the ridged line of Dornoch Terrace. Reference to council literature to such things as downhill cycle speeds in relation to bus stop locations really does concede that the speed at which cyclists travel in a traffic- is a traffic safety issue, if not the traffic safety issue, not the location or the number of bus stops. The following remedies are the remedies which are sought. One, that the proposal to introduce dedicated on-road bike lanes on both sides of Dornoch Terrace, between Glasden Road and-
I'm going to have to stop you there, your time has expired. I'm sorry, the five minutes I've got here has concluded, but I'm sure that-
I'm almost finished.
I appreciate that, but I must stop you there. Can I please call on the deputy mayor to respond?
Thank you, Mr Chair, and thank you, Mr Ferrars, for coming in. I'm happy to have a talk with you offline about some of your suggestions, because there will absolutely be an opportunity now for us to talk to the community in the next phase of the consultation, because as we announced in committee this morning, we will not be going ahead with the concept plan as was proposed in this consultation that we went through with. So, Lord Mayor Adrian Turner and the team are very committed to making sure that we have transport options around the city, and we are getting safely around our network, whether that's pedestrians, cars and bikes. And that's why we went out with this concept plan, and that's exactly what it was, a concept plan for consultation, so everybody could have their say. And what we heard very clearly over the last month is a very negative response from the residents and the surrounding locals around this plan as well. The draft design included other safety enhancements, as you mentioned as well, so it wasn't just about cyclists, there was pedestrians, intersection upgrades, move-safe changes around the Hargrave Road shops as well. But we received over 1,100 submissions, which is a very big response for us from not many more surveys, so 949 survey responses came back in as well. And as I said, overwhelmingly, it was negative when it came back to most of the aspects within the concept plan as well. Just to give you a bit of an idea, 64% of the respondents said they didn't like the overall proposal. 72% disagreed with the removing of the 115 car parks, as you mentioned. 72% disagreed with removing any vegetation to facilitate bike lanes. 62% disagreed with the consolidating bus stops, as you mentioned as well, around the buses. And 58% disagreed with the upgrading of the 1.2 kilometres with bike lines on both sides of Dornoch Terrace, which I think you were about to allude to in your commentary with suggestions to go forward. So we're not going ahead with the concept plan as was sent out in the last month, but we are going to keep going back and having a look. We do know that Dornoch Terrace remains a safety concern, and we've heard loud and clear from the residents that it needs to be safer for pedestrians, we need to support better intersections, we need to improve pedestrian safety, and we need to try and do those footpath improvements, pedestrian crossings and refuges, with a minimal removing of parking for the local residents as well. So even though we're not going ahead with what is planned in this concept design, and that's exactly what it was, a concept design to speak to the residents, we do want to have a look at what we can do in the future. So we're focused on maintaining those local amenities, and you mentioned in particular the church, St Francis Versissi, and the residents down there, and there's a lot of senior residents on that street as well. We've listened to the residents, we've got our top three things we'll be looking at, which are pedestrian movements, pedestrian refuges, the, also the crossings as well, where it can be safer, and what implementation, what things we can implement to slow the traffic as well, and still provide some safer aspects for cyclists to go through there as well. So we're very keen to go back to the drawing board. Safety is our utmost priority, but we heard loud and clear that residents want that balanced across all users of the road with their local amenity as well. So what we're going to be doing, you'll see a consultation letter to close out that concept design, which will go out to everyone in the next week. We want to get that letter out before Christmas, so that everybody sees it before they may be in or out of the city for the Christmas season as well. And in the near future, going into the next year and the next financial year, further consultation, when we go back and look in detail what the responses are. If you have some examples of what you think might work, as it sounds like you're going into, Mr Ferrars, lovely for you to send them on to me, we can have a discussion about that. Councillor Shree has also got some ideas that he wants to put into that consultation as well, and we're back to have a look at how we can modify the concept plan to meet what we heard loud and clearly from the residents. So thank you for coming in today, and I'm sure we'll talk about it in the future.
May I ask one question?
I'll talk to you off outside, Mr Ferrars.
Councillors, now begins question time. Are there any questions of the Lord Mayor or Chair of any standing committee? Councillor Richards.
Thank you, Mr Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, a state of fire emergency has now been declared in many local governments across Queensland, including Brisbane. Can you outline how a state of fire emergency affects Brisbane City Council, and what can residents do to be prepared for a fire emergency?
Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Richards, through you, Mr Chair. Absolutely, there is a very real and serious threat across Queensland, but also here in Brisbane, when it comes to bushfire. I know councillor Richards, you are very, very active and interested in this, given the nature of the ward that you represent and the large amount of bushland and green space in that ward, as I know a number of other councillors are in similar situations. And obviously, it is something that we are all very conscious of. There are people right now in parts of Queensland losing their properties, losing their possessions, there are people getting injured, and it is something that we are all not only standing together in sympathy with, but also, in the case of Brisbane, we are here, ready to help in any way possible. But from a council point of view, we are doing everything possible to make sure that we are ready for the threat that is upon us right now. We are very blessed to have such a rich green space across the city, and that is something that we are proud of as an administration. Our green space is a big part of the livability of the city, but when you get conditions like we're experiencing right now, with extremely dry vegetation and with windy conditions, we know that a small spark can quickly become a big inferno, which puts property and lives at risk. I can say that council has more than 100 staff that are trained in dealing with bushfires, and we have at least 25 vehicles in our fleet that are associated with bushfire response. We are obviously not the lead agency when it comes to bushfire here, this is something that is done by the Queensland State Government and their Fire and Emergency Services, but we are here to help, we are here to provide support, and we are ready. We've also been doing our part to make sure that residents are aware of a number of important things. First of all, if they see a bushfire, if they see a fire anywhere in Brisbane, do not assume that someone else has reported it. It is better that this gets reported multiple times rather than not at all, because it can be, every minute can be important, every minute counts when it comes to getting on top of these fires. Now, we know out in councillor Richard's area last week, a car crash led to a fire, which was responded to in that part of the city, but also there was a fire up in councillor Toomey's area as well, just recently. So Brisbane, even though we are an urban area, we are not immune for this bushfire risk. So the other thing that residents can do as well is to make sure that they have an emergency kit in place. An emergency kit is something that is not only relevant for fires, but also for floods and storms as well. If your house gets damaged, if you can't take your belongings from your house, what is it that you would want to put in a kit like that? And there's various recommendations that council provides, and also state agencies provide, to make sure that you have the basic things you need to last a couple of days if you have to leave the house in a hurry. So basic things like torches, radios, basic supplies of food, first aid, batteries, and also things like documents as well, making sure you have a copy of important documents in a safe place, so that you can take it out of the house quickly. There are property maintenance things which people in rural and bushland settings are aware of, but keeping vegetation cleared, which is why we do things like having the free green waste tipping events in the lead-up to the summer season. We've had three of those in recent months, but the reality is there is a real and serious threat, so much so that I can inform you today that council outdoor workers have been ordered to stop work because of the threats from the conditions. And those threats include the threats of smoke in the air, and also extreme weather conditions. So people that are not essential out on the job when it comes to being outdoors have been asked to stop work this afternoon. And that is something that is happening at a state level as well, so state government job sites have also been asked to stop work. And so this should indicate to people the serious nature of the threat that exists at the moment when it comes to bushfire, and also the hazards associated with that, such as air pollution, smoke in the air. And I know that many people are prone to asthma and other breathing conditions, which are seriously impacted by the smoke and the bushfire threat. So we need to stay vigilant as a city, we are-
Lord Mayor, your time has expired.
Thank you.
Further questions? Councillor Cassidy.
Thank you, Chair. Our thoughts are with those men and women who are on the front line fighting these catastrophic fires as well, and wish them all the very best at the moment. My question is for the Lord Mayor. I refer to answers to questions on notice numbers 1, 3, 4, 5, 7, 9, 10 and 12 in today's agenda, which states that certain information in these questions is not held by council. Some details referring to these payments were reported in the 2018-19 annual report, which you yourself signed off on. It seems unlikely that council reported on information it did not have access to. Given some of these contracts involve payments to companies owned by members of council, by councillors, and their close family members of key management personnel, this seems incredible. So I ask you, Lord Mayor, what are you hiding?
Lord Mayor.
I'm not sure whether that was a state, a political statement or a question. As usual, we see Labour coming around fishing for opportunities to throw mud, for opportunities to have personal attacks against LMP councillors, at a time when there are certainly many more important things that the city is facing right now. And the most important issue for Labour, when the city is facing a bushfire threat, is to fish around to find mud. Now, if you have a look at the answers to questions on notice, there are pages and pages of information that's been provided, but if information is not held by council, or if information is already available in other places or public reports, we're not going to be Labour Party research assistants for them. You know, you can, you can- you can find other ways to play your political games and throw mud, but ultimately, if we don't have the information readily available, we don't have it readily available. But what is obvious from the pages and pages of answers to questions is that there is a massive amount of information we are providing each and every week. And you only have to look at the type of questions being asked to know that Labour's focus is on one thing and one thing only. Mud-slinging, mud-slinging, political campaigns, and certainly-
Councillors, the Lord Mayor will be heard in silence.
And certainly not on the governance of the city, certainly not on the issues that are affecting Brisbane residents, but just on their grubby attempts to throw mud. Their grubby attempts which are motivated by desperation, by the fact that they have no ideas, no vision, no agenda, no policies and no substance. But ultimately, I think everyone can see that council is fulsome in its release of information, and whether it's in all of the publicly available rep- information, and whether it's in all of the publicly available reports that are released each year, and it's funny because it is hilarious that Labour still tries to peddle this line that there's somehow secrecy involved in anything that council does, when the reality is there's information provided in questions on notice every week, there's information provided in annual reports and various other documents, there are pages and pages, there are volumes of information provided each week through council that all councillors get access to. They have more information provided to them than anyone in any other council in Australia, in Australia, and we certainly provide far more information than any state government ever has, any state government ever has. Apparently, they're interested in accountability, yet their mates up the road are quite happy to have cabinet secrecy which lasts for thirty years. So, they want their discussions in cabinet to be secret for thirty years, yet somehow they're interested in openness, transparency and accountability. We know what they're interested in, they're interested in cheap political point scoring, they're interested in slinging mud, they're interested in personal attacks, they're interested in being wreckers and not builders. And so, Labour is true to form, as I said, at a time when the city is facing a serious threat from bushfires, this is their most important issue, digging around in the mud. And it is quite shameful, and today Labour are being exposed for the cheap political opportunists that they really are.
Further questions? Councillor Davis.
Point of order.
Point of order, councillor Cassidy.
I move suspension of standing orders to allow me to move the following urgency motion. The council releases all information on which councillors and key management personnel have received council contracts.
I have an urgency motion from councillor Cassidy, I will allow it. You have three minutes to urgency, please limit your comments to why the matter is urgent. Three minutes, councillor Cassidy.
Well, it's the same reason each and every week, Chair, because this Lord Mayor refuses at every moment, refuses to release even the most basic information when it comes to the use of ratepayers' money. We have been asking questions of this administration for weeks and weeks now about who the key management personnel are, which councillors are benefiting from receiving council contracts. These are councillors and their families, and senior executives within council and their families, who are privy to the most top-level secret information when it comes to determining these contracts, Chair. We've been asking for weeks and weeks for this Lord Mayor to come clean about what is being hidden, what is included in the annual report...
Yeah, so why must we do it now?
Because the Lord Mayor continues to refuse to provide this information to the ratepayers of Brisbane. Again, like each and every week, we ask the Lord Mayor to show leadership, to provide an organisation, a council, that is open and transparent when it comes to the use of ratepayers' money, to ensure that we don't see the rots continue that we have under his watch and his LMP administration's watch. He won't show that leadership, Chair, so it is up to this council chamber to show that leadership. It's a very simple question. Each and every time this comes up, the Lord Mayor says, just go and read it, it's somewhere. Well, this information is not somewhere, that is the point, that is why we're asking these questions here in the chamber today, it is why we're asking these questions on notice, and why does this administration keep coming back and saying this information is not available when quite clearly it is? Those councillors and key management personnel made a declaration to the CEO's office and said, I have been getting these contracts. But which contracts? Which contracts have these councillors and these key management personnel been getting?
Councillor Cassidy, don't talk over me, this is a speech you give every week, why now? Why can't you use your regular motions?
They're all about rots, they're all about Adrian Shunner and his rots, Chair.
Why can't you, why can't you...
But, this is a different one, this is a different rot.
All right, so you have fifty-two seconds, why it's urgent?
It's urgent because as an organisation, we know that local government as a sector has a particular stench about it at the moment, Chair. So, we owe it to the ratepayers and the residents of Brisbane to lead the most open and transparent and accountable administration and council in Brisbane, in Queensland and Australia. We're the largest local government organisation in Australia, we should be the most open and transparent one. We shouldn't have a Lord Mayor that is running some sort of protection racket here in this council and hiding this sort of information. We think it's up to this council chamber to finally show the leadership that this Lord Mayor refuses to do so.
On a matter of urgency, all those in favour say aye. And the contrary, no.
No.
The noes have it.
Division.
Division are called by councillor Cassidy. Okay, we've gone over this before. Councillor Cassidy, under section... Councillor Cassidy, your conduct in this council meeting is disorderly, and in accordance with section 186a of the City of Brisbane Act 2010, I order that you leave the meeting place and stay out for the rest of the meeting. For swearing. I didn't hear it, and you swore at me. Please ring the bells. Attendants, please close the bars. Clerks, please read the result.
Mr Chair, the noes have it, the voting being three in favour and twenty-one against.
The noes have it, please return to your seats. Councillor Davis, head a question.
Thank you, Chair. My question is to the Chair of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee, councillor Hammond. Councillor Hammond, in Brisbane, Clean, Green, Sustainable 2017-2031, one of council's goals is to make Brisbane a water-smart city. Can you please outline the actions this administration is taking to promote sustainable water use?
Councillor Hammond.
And I'd like to thank councillor Davis for the question. As we all appreciate in this place, Queensland is a beautiful place to live, rest and play with its unique climate and diverse flora and fauna. However, we also know that living in Queensland also comes with its challenges, some of which we are experiencing right now, with devastating bushfires across our great state, dry conditions and now very low rainfall. For the past several months, we've been getting ready for drought, with the combined dam levels sitting at just seventy percent. Today, the South East Queensland combined dam levels are now sitting at a devastating sixty point two percent. With this combined heat, it's likely the region's water grid storage will fall below sixty percent in the next fortnight, meaning that we will be entering into drought response stage. As you mentioned, councillor Davis, water sustainability has been clearly outlined as a priority, and I can assure this chamber that council has history of success when it comes to water reduction. During the last drought, council implemented a wide range of water-smart strategies and successfully reduced our water use by seventy percent. Many of these strategies have remained, and we are now confident in our ability to prepare for life through and recover, live through and recover through drought. With South East Queensland drought response stage coming into effect very soon, council is ready to put more action into more water-saving initiatives. To reduce our own water usage, council at the moment is now identifying the top fifty uses of water across our city and our facilities. We have already gone into our pool facilities and reduced, just for an example, changed their showerheads to reduce the amount of water that the pools are using. As we had in our committee last week, we had storm harvesting and storage programme, which will decrease water in over twenty-nine lease sites across our city. Council has proactively identified water leaks across our sites and will be working to prepare these as a matter of urgency. As we move further into drought, council will be working closely with both SEQUEB and Queensland Urban Utilities, who are responsible for maintaining water security and distributing across the South East Queensland. If combined water levels drop further to fifty percent, we'll enter the next stage of drought and mandatory water restrictions will be enforced. This could happen as early as the beginning of next year, so let us spread the words to our community of how we at home can reduce water in our own houses. Let it be known, if you have a standard bath, that is a hundred and sixty litres of water. Shocking when you put it into that kind of perspective, a hundred and sixty litres goes into a standard bath, that is going to be way beyond what we can use in our daily intake. As I'm, and I'm encouraging every councillor here, when we speak to our school students...
Councillor Cassidy, you've been ejected from this place, please leave. What?
So, point of order, Chair?
No, you've been excluded from this meeting, please leave.
But you can't, you haven't followed the meeting's local law.
I have.
You haven't.
I have. Can I please have an adjournment so that the correct officers can be brought to this chamber to remove councillor Cassidy?
If the council hasn't, the chairman's opinion committed an activist order...
Mr Chair, I move that we adjourn until this issue can be sorted with the BCLP and councillor Cassidy. Seconded.
Thank you. I have a resolution that we adjourn this meeting until the correct council officers can attend the chamber and remove councillor Cassidy. It's been moved by the deputy mayor, seconded by councillor Richards. All those in favour, say aye. The contrary, no. The ayes have it. Division. By councillor Griffiths and councillor Cook. Please ring the bells. Attendants, please close the bars. Clerks, please read the result.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being twenty in favour and five against.
The ayes have it, this council meeting is now adjourned while we wait for councillor Cassidy to be removed.